I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Keith Corley.
Keith Corley, all right, appreciate that. He threw under the bus.
With both wheels over.
I was just making sure we're live. All right, I have six oh two on the twenty-fifth of November, we have a quorum present, I call the Upson County Board of Commissioners regular session to order. All right, we'll start off with the invocation by Reverend Keith Corley, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, sir.
Well, I want to be thankful for this time together tonight. We pray that you'll watch over us, that you'll keep us safe and bless us. Give these leaders the wisdom they need as a guide to direct, help them to make the right decisions that will lead our county and our community in the right direction. Let us deal with each other with civility, let us be reminded that we're all, we're here together to work for the same purpose, the betterment of our community. Bless our time together, forgive us where we have failed, for this we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Can you see this? All right, first item on the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Do you have a motion?
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
All right, we'll now move into old business, we have a rezoning. This is REZ 2024-06, applicant and property of Kevin Brown of Upson County, it's a rezoned thirty acres from AR to R1. Do we have someone here to speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, I did talk to Mr. Brown last week, and he had an appointment that he wasn't sure he could miss, he thought he might send his son, so I guess neither Mr. Brown nor his son is here. You may recall that this has been a continued hearing twice, actually, you held a public hearing, so we don't need another one, but he asked you to basically postpone your decision because he was waiting the decision of the amendments to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision. If you look at the preliminary division of the property that he did, I guess, last year about this time, there were twelve acre lots, because you'll require that, that was the minimum we were thinking, because it's zone AR. And then the rezoning was about thirty acres in the northwest corner of the property that he wanted to be five acre lots, and he was asking that to be rezoned to R1, I believe, so that he could have the minimum two thousand two hundred square foot homes. So.
Okay.
Whatever the board desires.
So, Doug, I'll just say, I'm not sure on the, when you, when you move it to R1 for the home size, does that open it up later to someone could come in and say, I want a subdivision of those five acres to, to five homes and one acre?
Potential.
Is there some way that we can meet his request without enabling that?
Conditions of approval.
Okay. Okay, well, I, that's just me personally asking the question, I'm not making the decision. What I think we should do is, since he's not here to state his case, is just continue it to some other time. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we continue this, do I got a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion, that's it.
Do you have a timeframe on it?
Ninety days.
You want to see it again in ninety days?
Yeah, he can come forward within ninety days.
Within ninety days?
Within.
Okay.
Within three meetings.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, next item up is a public hearing for the budget. All right, and I guess we need to have a motion to open the public hearing for the budget.
So moved.
I have Mr. Jones, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ellington, a second.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, I have the sign-in sheet, I am not showing anyone signed up to speak on the budget. All right, with that said, do I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Jones made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ellington, seconds.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, next item up is a public hearing for beer and wine ordinances, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Jones, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second over here, Commissioner Watson?
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, we have a sign-up sheet for the beer and wine ordinance, public hearing, no one signed up to speak at the public hearing for the beer and wine ordinance. Can I get a motion to?
So moved.
Close the public hearing, have Commissioner Watson, I guess, second?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, next item up is public comments, we have, for public comments, I have, I can't read first name, it's Boyd, and this is, Smarter Church Road, is this about a zoning or is this about public comment?
Well, I guess it could be.
Are you on the agenda?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. You don't need to, you don't need to do, we'll get to your, then you have opportunity. Okay, have no one signed up for?
Let me fix that, something's going on with the thing in the bag, I'm sorry.
Not YouTube Live, just a display?
No, just TV, yeah.
Okay. One moment for technical difficulties. All right, next item up is a consent agenda, on the consent agenda is approval of the October twenty-eighth special call budget meeting minutes, approval of the October twenty-eighth regular meeting minutes, approval of the November fifth special call meeting minutes, approval of an amendment to the county manager's contract, for everyone, this information I had to do with an issue with his health insurance that we had not addressed appropriately, we had to go back and fix some language. Next item was approval of the twenty twenty-six Board of Commissioners meeting schedule. Then we have approval of the holiday calendar, which is enclosed in your packet, acceptance of the third quarter financial review, which we had, and approval of the twenty twenty-six beer and wine renewals, and you have that in your packet as well, there are seven or eight, I don't recall, one of them is not going to be renewed, that's the eighth one, that business has been closed for some time, so we'll deal with that separately. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Watson?
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
All right, new business, next item up is discussion and consideration of ordinance two eighty-seven, amending the alcohol ordinance.
Yeah, Chairman, so basically what we're doing with this is just cleaning up our old ordinance, we had some obsolete language in it, and also cleaning up the issues that we've had in the past with the measuring part of it, and then setting, we've got a resolution too that's going to set the fees associated with it. But outside of that, that's pretty good.
Okay, and we've had required public hearings, so I need now is a motion to approve the ordinance. Commissioner Biggs makes a motion to approve, a second?
I'll say.
Commissioner Ellington, second.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Next item up is discussion and consideration of the resolution thirty dot twenty twenty-five establishing the license fee for each alcohol licensed class or permit in any applicable application, this is something we discussed previously, and he just addressed it as well, there is a resolution, and essentially, I believe we're matching the cities.
Well, specifically, not necessarily amount for amount, because the city has a little bit different setup, they have different, is it districts they call it?
Right.
Within the city, so.
The entertainment district.
Yeah, there's flexes a little bit inside of that district, but we're basically within the parameters of what they're set up to do, and then some surrounding counties we looked at, to try to, you know, make sure that amounts were reasonable.
All right, so it addresses malt beverage license, packaged wine license, pouring license, wine pouring license, all those are five hundred dollars, and residential wholesale dealer's license is a thousand dollars, and then there's some application fees, sell malt beverages, seven fifty, sell wine, seven fifty, retail consumption on premises, pouring licenses are seven fifty, wholesale license for dealers is two thousand dollars, without reading everything, just giving you kind of gist of it.
To add that, these are increases in the amounts, but the amounts we've had have been, they're archaic, basically.
Exactly. All right, I think everybody's tracking, can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, I got Commissioner Watson with a motion, I got Commissioner Jones with a second.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes. All right, I have so much paperwork here, I lost my agenda. All right. Okay, so, next items, we have one, well, let's see, nope, next item is a discussion with Tax Commissioner on Security in the twenty twenty-six budget, so Commissioner. Chatting.
Okay, sit here.
Wherever you want to sit.
We're going to be moved to the Drake Building, we've had discussions about security in Austin, and ever since that move came up, you know, my, I have become more aware of the need for security, not just once we're in the Drake Building, but actually where we are now, you know, we discussed that during a meeting one time, and I want to amend my budget to provide security at least on a part-time basis where we are now. I listened to the last part of the call meeting earlier this month, I was here but had to leave or whatever, but what I want to do for the board tonight is clarify some points about the need for security, why I feel there's a need for security in our office now, and when, when we moved to the Drake Building, I know there's talk of sharing security personnel with the city, you know, that's something I'm very open to, to have somebody on the grounds. I made the points in the past that, you know, it's my job, part of my job is protecting taxpayer funds, but the biggest part that I see in the security is the protection of my staff, that's another reason. In today's world, you know, anything can happen, so that's why I'm here tonight, is kind of have a discussion with y'all, clarify some points, and give some insight to what I think are some misconceptions about what's going on at my office. But first, let me ask y'all a question, and anybody or everybody can answer, there's security, armed security at the New Justice Center, there's always been armed security at the courthouse, why is that? Anybody? Why, why do we have armed security at, at the courthouse, at the Justice Center, for other constitutional officers, for their staff, for the judges? Why do we have armed security?
It's always been that way.
I think there.
Specifically, why do we have it?
Well, we're dealing with trial cases with potential criminals or people who are accused of criminal activity, and, you know, there's, there's just a different element, I think, there, we have to, you have to have security.
Something might happen, right?
Yeah.
It prevent a shooting, disturbance, you know, something like that, do y'all feel that could go on in my office? Have y'all ever heard the term ex officio sheriff?
Yep.
Are you familiar with that? Back in the day, tax collectors, tax commissioners, when they couldn't get the delinquent tax collector, they turned the delinquent taxpayer to the sheriff, and he would go through the process of filing the lien, seizing the property, and all that stuff. The legislator, legislative branch created ex officio sheriff. When I came in in twenty seventeen, and most other tax commissioners in the state were sworn in now as ex officio sheriffs, we take on the duties of what the sheriff and his deputies used to do as far as enforcing the tax law. Part of enforcing that tax law is filing liens against property, people, and seizing property, okay? And I mentioned to this board in the past that there's been instances that I don't like to talk about, you know, because this isn't about me, it's about what can occur because of me placing those liens and seizing that property. Seizing property, sticking that sign in somebody's yard is equivalent to serving a warrant, okay? How many times have we heard on the news where people have had something against a business, against a person, and they go in and take it out, not just on that person, but on the whole office, okay? That's what I'm trying, that's what I have become aware, more aware of, is the protection of my staff, okay? We protect the Justice Center and that staff and those people down there with armed security, that's all I'm asking for now, which, you know, it was voted unanimously not to provide it, and talk about it, and probably have it in place when we move to the Drake Building, and I agree to that, okay? But from what I caught from the last meeting, there's commissioners that might think that we still don't need it, okay, so that's why I'm here tonight. Let me take this, and Jessica, if you don't mind, I'll just pass that down. These are deposit slips, pictures of the funds that we deal with, that I do not want to say publicly because of obvious reasons, okay? And I'm not pulling this from just a certain time of the year, I'm pulling these deposits from, as you'll see on that first one, this is the middle of the year when there's no really property tax collector going on, those are our deposits, look at that currency amount up there on that first page, okay? That's our average daily deposit that I walk across the street to the bank, when I'm not there, one of my staff members walks that across the street while somebody else is watching, keeping an eye on him. The second page, it's the beginning of tax season in, in September, look at those deposit amounts, I want you to note the currency amounts, this is cash. The third page is two weeks before our November twentieth due date, look at those currency amounts, look at the total deposits, and while I'm here on this page, I want you to, this is a scenario I'm trying to prevent, if something were to happen to one of these deposits from me transporting it, or somebody transporting it from the Drake Building to the bank, we not only lose that currency, and I'm, by the way, I'm only bonded for like fifty thousand dollars, okay? That probably needs to be updated, but we lose all those checks in there, those transactions have already been keyed, if we lose those checks, we have to somehow contact every person that wrote that check and get them to write another one, you know, so that's why I feel the need for security to protect these funds, especially when it's going to the bank. That fourth picture, I want you to look at that clerk's cash drawer, that's during property tax season on any given date, that's one of my clerk's cash drawers, and of course, that last one is a deposit I took to the bank right after our November twentieth collection date, you see that amount of that deposit, and how much currency is in there? You brought up criminals there at the Justice Center.
Suspected criminals.
What's that?
Suspected criminals.
Do you know most of those criminals there that could pose a danger, most of the time they're handcuffed, right? Every day, almost every day, we have convicted felons walk in our office renewing their tag, and we're dealing in this currency. Do you think anything crosses their mind? I can sit there and look on my camera, on my security cameras, and I can watch one person look at another person that's handing my clerk cash, I don't know what they're thinking, but, you know, that's what, that's the potential there, okay? Knowing what you know now, just part of it, knowing what you know now, I have a staff of six ladies, would you want your wife or your daughter working in my office without protection of some kind? There's many days that I open my door, leave it open for the public to come in and talk or whatever they need to be, if I know I'm going to be in there, I leave my door open, but many times it's closed because I'm back and forth in the clerk's room, helping them out, doing whatever I need to do. You know, when you have an open door policy like that, and you do some of the things I do, and you deal with what we deal with, funds-wise, do you see why I have a concern for security? When we go to the Drake Building, we're going to be there thirty minutes earlier than everybody else, because our hours have changed, we're seven thirty to five thirty now, so we're there thirty minutes before everybody gets there, and we're there thirty minutes after everybody goes home. Right now, at five thirty, it's almost dark. How many of you remember the bank branch that was robbed last year? Somebody walked in broad daylight during business hours, they didn't have security, okay? They walked out with some money. As a constitutional officer, it's my job to protect taxpayer funds, you talk about spending taxpayer dollars, what's important, what's maybe not as important, what's not really important, spending taxpayer dollars to protect millions of dollars of taxpayer money is a wise decision, for what I caught out of the last meeting, there's money there set aside to provide whatever can be provided for security, it's really up to the sheriff, the police department, with y'all working out between the city and the county, but this board of commissioners, y'all on record as voting not to provide security for my office, okay? One time. That's why I'm here today to ask you, not, I'm not being confrontational, it's a true concern for my duties and for my staff more than anything. You know, and I think it's something that should be available when we come, at least if it can't be available now, I have to insist that it be in place before we come to the Drake Building. I'm all for the idea of having an officer here patrolling the grounds, he can have a place set up outside our office in the Drake Building, a place set outside up here, he can be talked about, but before we occupy the Drake Building, I have to insist that security be in place. As a constitutional officer, I have duties and needs, and if I say that I need security to perform those duties, this board has to provide it. Is there any questions y'all have for me? My attorney, Aaron McCullough, he, he might want to bring up some points, any?
So as of, as of right now, what type safety measures do you have in place?
We have cameras, and I, I carry.
So when you make.
Any glass?
When you leave the office to go make your deposit, do you contact the PD department, Sheriff Department?
No, because we don't have a certain time of the day that we go over there, but we observe and watch because it's right across the street.
I'm thinking one, one of the meetings that we had, both bodies of government agreed to provide security for that time period.
That's, that's something to talk about, but, you know, what about, I, I go back to my point, you provide security for the daily operations of the Justice Center, all day long that they're there. You know, I'm asking for that same thing, you know, what's to prevent somebody from coming in? You know, do, do we, as a board, do we as elected officials wait for something to happen, and then in hindsight say, yeah, we should have had somebody there, preventive measure or something? You know, I go back to the idea Lonnie had, you know, when he came over from the city, what's, what's the officer that the school has?
Resource.
What's that?
Resource.
Yeah. Something along those lines, some, some, I'm not asking for a vehicle to transport this money, I'll use my own when I'm there, when I'm not there, one of my clerks has to take it, they might need the use of a county vehicle, I don't know, the assessor's vehicles right there in the other parking lot, they could use that, I will not allow anybody other than a staff member of mine to, to take that deposit, I mean, that's just, I'm signed on for those funds, it's my responsibility.
Look, I think what I would do, I would make contact with the Sheriff Department or the Police Department if I had those type concerns about making that type of deposit, just going to say so.
Yeah, I want an escort, you know, not, not for me, but for my staff members, I want an escort when they go from the Drake Building to the bank, no doubt.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where we, I think we already have an agreement, the sheriff says he'll, he'll provide an escort if you request it, if you request it, and then we have the funds, you requested a line item, we have the funds, those funds haven't gone anywhere, and the discussion is overall security for the entire government. Complex, right, that, that's kind of where, at least where I'm.
Is that something that we could pretty much say we have an assurance of, because I'm on board for that?
Yeah, I think Lonnie's still working.
I think the sheriff wants to provide that.
The sheriff wants it?
Personnel.
I don't know the details of it, I'm not.
We don't really have any details, the sheriff said if we decided to do that, he wanted it to be a deputy that he controlled, which is fine, but, yeah, we can work on, he then talked about just doing the transports, but, I mean, I could circle back around and do whatever the board wants me to do, huh?
Well, I just think we just need to look at all the options, you know, and I know I said publicly, you know, we, we do live in a different world today, you know, and I personally think it wouldn't, it would not be a bad idea to have someone on the complex, whether it's. someone on the complex, whether it's Thomason PD or Upton Sheriff, I think that's probably a good idea. And I would just ask that we circle back, look at it, you know, at some point, we'll probably have to take a vote on it, but.
Yeah, you know, I just would, I don't know how far along they've come in with the Drake Building, but I wanted to give plenty of advance notice of my sincere desires to have full-time security on the premises while we're operating, and give y'all time to think about it, and, you know, let's get something worked out. This is not about tax dollars, spending tax dollars for somebody's raise. This is about spending tax dollars for people's safety. And that's, to me, that's a call. But anyway, I thank you for all-
All right.
Duly noted, Commissioner Chatham.
You take this back to the old-
Yeah.
Andy. I think my attorney would like to say a couple words. It's okay. I appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir, your name?
Aaron McCullough.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Few different things, I think the commissioner talked about a lot of it. I think that he is correct in his evaluation. There are other legal ramifications of this. There's equal protection issues. He is a constitutional officer, and other constitutional officers have protection. That's common knowledge. To treat him differently shows a legality quite questionable, right, and how that works. Another thing, someone who has represented lots of tax commissioners around the state, just about everybody has security because of the, it is known monetary funds going into a specific office. He has a duty to keep his own personnel safe. We're talking about risk, we're talking about the counties themselves, bonds, insurance claims. If you've ever had to go through those, and I assume some of you have at some point, one salary versus what an insurance claim against little Suzie Q. that has to transport X numbers of dollars and, you know, six digits at a time, right? This is, this is not a wise thing. I personally don't think it's really wise for the commissioner to be handling that himself and carrying that somebody to the bank, even if it is just across the street. Most crimes, they know what's happening, right? If something like this, it is, it is pre-planned, and that's an easy walkway. And I think he makes another really good point, how long can you run without the funds that were supposed to be here? Right? So at some point, it's a functional matter, but it is really risk reward. Outside legality stuff, and that's not something trying to be pushy or extra technical on that, but risk reward for what you bring in versus the cost of what this would be, it is indiscriminate. It's not even close. And especially as, again, as someone that's represented other tax commissioners, the safety issues, we talked about him in the office, but also these levies, right, going out onto people's property. It's not like we have a deputy that's going to walk around with them necessarily, but I know as somebody that did that myself for some tax commissioners, there are some places you don't want to go, but that he has an obligation to do that. And there, I've been on the courthouse steps, I've been the one selling properties, right? That's a, that's a risky place to be when you're about to sell somebody's mom's property from 50 years ago. So there are some significant risks, I think they're inherent. I think there's, sometimes there's just human risks that we have to pay attention to, outside of just the monetary funds. But thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight discussions and considerations of exemption from the moratorium on all subdivisions of real property in Upton County, established by Resolution 29 dot 2025. So I read through all eight myself, I think, oh, yeah, like commissioners did as well. And I think they're all in line with kind of where we're going, and we want to, even where we're going with the acres that we're going, we still want to have an ability to do a split to keep family land with the family. And so I'd like to make a motion that we consider all eight at one time as kind of like a consent agenda, and approve all eight at one time. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second. Do we have any discussion?
I'd rather see them one at a time.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second.
These people showed up, it's their time.
Yeah. So, well, we don't have anybody signed up to speak against, they're all speaking for. So do you want to recuse yourself?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody's making a motion, it's, unfortunately, I have one of these that I have a personal interest in, so I would have to recuse myself from voting on all eight of those.
All right. And it's just, it's not an approval.
Yeah, send it back to Doug, they're not like-
Signing it.
It's just saying we're okay with-
Going through the process.
The 32 acres being sub divested, or the 12 acres, I mean, they're all pretty clear, I believe, so.
Could we just read each one of them before we actually-
What it is, okay.
Yes, yes, please.
Do it like a consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right, first one is, again, the moratorium is at Willingham Spring Road, parcel 20 dash Again, I read them all this afternoon personally, but I can tell you exactly how much it's going to be split off there. And then there's one on Jeff Davis Road, parcel 021, 110, one on Tribune Mill Road, 217 Thurston Road, Poe Diddy Road, I know that one is a 32-acre lot. And then there's Baker Britt Road, which is a 30-plus acre lot, they're just busted out a five-acre lot. And then there's a Smarter Church Road and 1671 Hendricks Church Road. I think the smallest split I saw was a two-acre split, and that was on a property where a son is living with the parents, and they just want to build a house for the family member on the property. That was the smallest split I saw.
Mr. Tim, can I say something?
Yes.
I'm recusing myself for this vote, but I do want to-
Just to-
Correct, she's on the Baker Britt Road, which I do have special interest in. That is actually a four-track split. There's a five-acre parcel, 10-acre, 13 and 14-acre track.
Right. All greater, five are greater.
Right. Yeah, I thought it was a five-acre.
Okay. All right. Any, any further discussion required, Commissioner Biggs?
No.
Okay.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
That's Diane.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
They all approved.
Y'all would look. You didn't have to sit here till midnight. Y'all go ahead and record the plans on the end.
What, do you want to say? So, so we approved that you can move forward with your transactions with the zoning department. We don't, we're not approving the actual-
Split.
Split. You have to go through the process, but you're approved to go through the process.
And the man that's sitting right here in the front row in a purple shirt, he's the man you got to see.
Right, you just go back, everybody that got approved, you'll go back to the planning and zoning office, you'll see Mr. Courier, he will review your plan. He has a timeframe order to do that. And once he does that, he'll either approve it or make a recommendation that you change something. And then at that point, he will notify you or whoever, and he will have some communication that will be recorded. I don't think that he will physically record it, you will be responsible for recording it, once you receive his signature.
Mr. Courier.
Can I ask a question? So ours is on with our father's estate. We are trying to get our fatters done, we were hoping by the first of the year. You said he has a lotted timeframe. So from the time I go and ask him, what is the appropriate timeframe? Should I expect a return?
I don't think we know the answer to that, but you just have to speak with him after the meeting.
But, you know, I've waited a year for one of them. On the property on Highway 19. That's a separate deal from this.
Yeah, okay.
I just want you all to be up, somebody ought to be able to tell me sometime, should it take me a month or three months?
Okay. I'll just direct you to speak with Doug afterwards and give you an idea. All right. All right, next up, county manager, comments.
Attorney.
All right. County attorney.
Attorney.
County clerk.
Attorney.
Commissioner Biggs.
Just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and I appreciate the living and community in Upton County, and I thank my fellow board members for all that you do for this community.
Commissioner Ellington?
Just echoing his, his comments, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, your friends, your loved ones, and I want to say I'm thankful for my communities and Upton County and the city of Thomason, this board.
Commissioner Jones?
Ditto and ditto, and some of them ditto's that didn't have anything to say. I appreciate the process, and y'all need to appreciate the processes you have to go through. I hope you've got everything that Mr. Courier's going to need. He's the one that's going to tell you, you know, what the next step is, you know, moving forward with these zoning things, not zoning, but land splits. And other than that, happy Thanksgiving to y'all, and something else I was going to say, but I can't remember what it was.
YouTube land.
Yeah, hell, yeah, all y'all folks in YouTube are watching, watching us today. Thank y'all for watching.
All right. Commissioner Watson?
I also want to wish my fellow board members, all of our staff, a happy Thanksgiving if you're traveling. I hope, you know, everything goes well and you're safe. And I'm also, you know, definitely thankful for this community and what all work you guys put in on a day-to-day basis, so I appreciate it.
All right. Well, one, I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. I want to thank those who are watching in YouTube land for participating in our government. I think we have a great community, and I'm very thankful that tonight I will drive across Jeff Davis Bridge on my way home.
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
I got a second. I got a motion and a second. All favor? Aye. Adjourn.
Those of you who went through the split tonight, if you want to talk to me right now, we need to take care of you tonight. Others maybe not, but if you want to tell me which one it is, it's-